Start at 7:00 PM. I call this meeting of the Red Oak Independent School District to order at 7:00 PM. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. All board members are present with the exception of Mr. Knight. Mr. Sebring, would you lead us in invocation?
I will. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the stage and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Lord, I just pray that you be with the students and the staff as they prepare to come back to school. Father, just bring them back to us safely. Help us to educate them well. Lord, help us to be about the business of the district tonight and just bless it. Lord, help us to always keep you at the forefront of our mind and speak through us. In your name I pray.
Amen. You would stand while Ms. Porter pleads us in our pledges.
Let the pledges be quiet. United States of America, into the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mother, Texas, our pledge allegiance to you, Texas, one state, from the North to one.
We'll move into our superintendent's report. Ms. Sanford?
Yes, I want to start by welcoming someone to our district. I would like to introduce you and Ms. Larr, if you don't mind coming and standing with her while I introduce Ms. Jessica Treza. She's going to be our new principal at Wooden Elementary. Jessica has been an educator for 21 years, most recently an assistant principal at Middle Oathian ISD. She was also an assistant principal, testing coordinator, and Spanish teacher for Cedar Hill ISD. She specializes in school leadership and organizational accountability, culture and change management, professional learning communities, and restorative practices and intervention. She also has with her, I believe, her husband, Mark. If you would like to come up with her as well, we'd love to meet you as well. And Ms. Treza graduated from the University of North Texas with a bachelor's degree in organizational behavior and Lamar University with her master's degree in educational administration. And I believe y'all have three grown children. Is that correct? So we would just love to introduce to y'all Ms. Treza, our new Wooden Elementary principal, and welcome her to our district. Thank you for taking the time to come, and I wanted to get you done first so you do not have to stay. I know you have a lot going on getting ready for your campus. Thank you, and we are so excited and nice to meet you as well. Thank you. Very excited to have her with us. We're going to move in now to a projects update by Mr. Kevin Frills, Assistant Superintendent of District Operations.
Nice to meet you tonight. Good low stadium is done. Turf is complete. It's in. There's one of the pictures. Looks really good. It's all done. We got a little bit of work, instruction crews to do to clean up, but that's it. Some beautiful pictures. It is in and ready to go. TSTC, we've got the new sidewalk from the high school to TSTC is complete for the classrooms that we're doing this year and the one administrative office area. So there's the sidewalk. This is looking from the high school toward TSTC, so we have a path, pathway for them to travel. I know they're still cut across in a straight line, but at least we've got it there. And so the sidewalk goes all the way across from the high school to TSTC. And finally, our portables. I can tell you where we're at with those, our seven total units, the 14 classrooms, the 3th Middle School, 2nd Wooden, and 2nd East Ridge. The vendor is in the construction phase of our units. They've already, we've put money down, they're going quickly. We're on a fast track to get those sooner than later, we've been told. And we have a city and Red Oak Planning and Zoning Committee meeting next Monday and then the city council meeting the following Monday. And hopefully, if all goes well, on Tuesday, August 9th, I have some building permits where we can start. And if the portable's ready, we'll go as quickly as we can. But we're looking much faster than we thought of initially with the October-November time. Looks like we might be, by the end of September, we might have them in, if all goes well. So we will expedite that process because I didn't care between summit white and frost white floor tile. That's it. Anything, anybody got anything else? We're just waiting on the city to, we've submitted all the documents and so we're just waiting on planning and zoning and city council to approve our...
So you said they'll be in maybe September. What are we doing with the kids prior to...
Well, hopefully our DAP numbers don't need them that quickly, but at the elementary camps, I've talked to both those principals and they're just, remember, they're going to use pullout programs and those, so they're going to just schedule accordingly right at the first of the year. So they, Ms. Treza and Ms. Rector both know the plan that soon as they can get in, they will, but there's not classes going to be assigned to those anyway.
Okay.
They'll be just pullout programs, so they'll make it work within the building. Now, it'll be crowded and it'll be a little inconvenient, but they'll make it work.
Sure. Okay. Anybody else? I guess that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. This next portion, I want to begin by saying that Mr. Hulsey from Corrigan will be doing a presentation here in just a few minutes. There will also be an action item later during the meeting that will address his presentation. That's going to be item 6B. And at that time, Dr. Johnston and Mr. Frills will be giving further information and explanation. I just wanted to begin by saying that we're being very transparent and processing information from our constituents to be able to present a well-thought-out plan to the school board at the August meeting. There is no doubt that our top priority is a second middle school. This was reiterated during our survey where we had approximately 1,400 respondents and also in the individual meetings that we've been holding with our constituents. We're doing everything we can to address the current overcrowding. Like Mr. Frills said, we're working with the elementaries in order to do the pullout programs to try to just make do until then. We're going to try our DAEP numbers, we're hoping are going to stay down lower in the beginning. We are temporarily using some spaces at TSTC to put some of our high school classes. We're moving our, some of our career and technology classes out of the career and technology building to the high school to free up some additional spaces for middle school classes. We've created some classroom space with our staff development rooms. We've moved people over to the ESC. We're placing the portable buildings. So those are all temporary things that we're doing, trying to build some space for the existing students right now. None of these situations are ideal, and we know that, but they're necessary to address the overcrowding today while we're in the planning stages for a recommendation to call for a new middle school bond in the future. I'd like to say that we are listening to the taxpayers, some of the things that have come through us, through some of our board members and through our staff and parents and community. I'd like to just kind of briefly talk about a few of those before Mr. Hulsey comes up. One of the things that we kept hearing over and over again was that a bigger second middle school needed to be talked about instead of the size that we were looking at. So we looked at the numbers, we've listened, we've reassessed, and we've increased the size of our proposal on the second middle school. It will add 10,000 square foot to the proposed second middle school. Originally, it was 170,000 square foot on the previous ballot. This one will be 180,000 square foot, which would be a capacity of 1,200 students. That's going to add eight classrooms of 25 per classroom. So that is one of the things that we're hearing over and over again, that people were interested in seeing happening, and again, we are doing that. There was a lot of information that was out there in the past bond election where people were saying that we were building a school that had already been outgrown. So again, I want to reiterate that that is not true, that it was not going to already be outgrown. The numbers that we were giving, the projected numbers, were over all students, but if you placed all of them in middle school, it would have been, but we know not all incoming students will be in middle school. So regardless of all of that information, we are looking at a larger second middle school at this time. Storm shelters was another thing that's been kind of talked about that I wanted to address. We've always had a storm shelter with approved materials in the building design of new construction as well as any additions. So I wanted to clarify that because that was something that was, when we're meeting with people, they're saying, well, you weren't looking at the proper materials for storm shelters. Well, yes, we were doing the proper materials and they would be in all additions and also new construction. Then something that has come up over and over again was engineering and architectural plans done prior to the bond proposal, and that's something we're going to address tonight. That's what Mr. Hulsey is actually going to be here discussing with you shortly and that we'll be putting forth in a recommendation on 6B here in a few minutes. By looking at the engineering and architectural plans prior to the bond process, construction time would be reduced, and that was something that we were hearing, you know, we don't want it to be over two years. Well, if you're going to be doing the planning, it's going to be, but if you do the pre-planning, then you can hit closer into that area. So the construction time would be reduced to allow opening the building without further planning delays and would be the most advantageous for our students, our district, and our taxpayers. And it would also help in the reduction of the escalation prices. So again, this is something the taxpayers have been asking for when we've been meeting with them. Middle school only is a fourth thing that they've been asking for, and it was also reiterated on our survey as well. They felt like middle school was the priority. We know that middle school is the priority, a second middle school that is. So we do have other needs, but we absolutely know that that is definitely a priority, and so we're working on a plan to propose that in the August meeting for possibly placing that on the November ballot. And so at this time, I want to invite Mr. Steve Hulsey from Corrigan to come on up, and he's going to go over some of this pre-bond planning.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to be here tonight. So talking about a middle school, and if you're looking at a middle school, I wanted to go back a little bit just to recap timelines and information from before. So May 2022 bond timeline, if the bond would have passed, we would have begun design in May of 2022. We would have issued the drawings to bid to contractors in March of '23. It's a 10-month time period for design, that's what it takes, beginning construction in April of '23, and then open for students in August of 2025. So that's basically a two-year construction cycle. You'll see I have highlighted up here 28 months construction. They can build it in 24 years, 24 months. That's a normal, typical middle school construction timeframe, but after they get through building it, you also have, the district has to install furniture, they have to do operation things, they have to get the grass growing in, you have to get teachers in there to set up their rooms. There's a lot of things that you have to do on your side after you're giving the building or from the contractor. So that's why I had 28 months. They would actually finish, or would have finished, the building in a May timeframe, and then you would have had all summer to set it up, move the furniture in, get all ready for students to come in August. So that's why that's listed as 28. So if you so choose and move forward with a November 2022 bond timeline for a new middle school, that normal schedule, you just move it up six months from May to November. That schedule that we had in May, in November, we moved up six months. So we would begin design in November. We bid the project starting in September of '23, begin construction in October of '23, and then open for students in August of 2026. Now, what you see there is the asterisk of being completed in February of 2026, which the project really probably would be completed in December, January, December of '25, January of '26, but you can't open a middle school mid-year. You can't open it because of hiring teachers, you can't get teachers to work a half year, you can't get it because you'd have to do attendance boundaries, breaking those up at the middle of the year, the disruptions of moving in students and setting up teachers and all of that in the middle of the year. So you'd actually have the project in February early, which that's okay, especially in this construction market, the way things are going now, which I'll explain a little bit in the future. That's okay. You can have it done. Grass is growing, everything's better, everything's clean, you're ready to go, you have a little bit more time. So the bottom two lines, we basically added six months to that timeframe that was proposed in the May 2022 bond, but you also added six months of escalation, and I'm going to talk about that coming up in a second. So thinking about it, talking to the administration, looking at options for you as you would move forward and if you do call a bond for November. So you can see the top chart there, it's kind of, the numbers are kind of hard to read, but bond planning and election scheduling, so first thing up there is November 5th, 2022. So that's the red dot up there at the top, that's Election Day. Option A, so option A would be after the bond passes in November, just what I explained before, we'd be contracted to design and document the building. You bid it in September-October timeframe of '23, and then it would be done basically at the beginning of the year 2026, but wouldn't open until August of 2026. So that's the timeframe, the same timeframe that we had in the May 2022 transferred and moved up six months. Thinking about that, talking to the district administration, is there any options to that? You can definitely move forward with that path and go ahead, and that's an option. Option B would be, say, begin full design now. So contract with us to begin full design now, we would do the same 10-month timeframe going right through the election season and bid the project in June-July next year, which cuts three months off of the escalation timeframe. With this option, we're going to design it all the way through to the end, 100% complete documents, issue it to a construction team, whatever delivery method the district selects for this. They would bid it, they'd begin construction in August, early September of 2023, and then you go two years from that, August-September, open it of August 2025. That's a two-year timeframe, that's a typical construction timeframe. That works, people do it all the time. What that doesn't have in there is built-in things, moving the furniture, and you're going to have to work with the contractor, which they do and they will, happens all the time. You're going to have to work about setting up the school building, getting everything ready to go, but that does work. And then I started thinking about, I said, what is a different option? Because we want to accelerate construction procurement. With the percent and a half of inflation that we're getting a month, you want, the sooner you get under contract, the sooner you're able to lock in pricing, the less escalation you have to add on to it. So I said, well, do the same thing, partially release us to design it. So it's still the same basic schedule that we have in option B, but our contract's only going to be through design development, which is about November, so that doesn't slow us down at all. After the bond passes, we would do a part two to our contract and do the construction documents and the bidding and the construction, but what this allows us to do is three or four things. So number one, doing it early like this, we'll get our teams together. Well, I guess the first piece is, in August, if you go down this path, I would recommend and that you procure a construction manager for this project. Get them on board with us early and do what we call pre-construction services. So the pre-construction services are going to be working with us hand-in-hand while we're designing the project, they're doing scheduling, they're helping us say, right now HVAC units are hard to get, so we need to get those out first, or whatever that might be. They're also running with their estimates as we go through the design process. We are connected all the way from start to bidding in the option B method. That doesn't occur until we're done with the drawings and then they bid it. This gets that partnership together. The district would be paying some pre-construction fees before a bond, which is that scheduling, estimating, coordinating piece to have them going along. But what we would do is that you see bidding and award packages, all that yellow that starts in January and goes to August of next year. So we're working with them. First package may be grading. So they say, we got to get grading out, we're going to have it bid first, we're going to lock that in and get construction started earlier, get pricing locked in earlier. They may say steel procurement, they may see HVAC units, et cetera, but we're working with them, multiple packages, as they would do what we call it a critical path of building a project, getting the products that they need earlier, contracting them earlier, purchasing them earlier, and getting them delivered earlier. Because this construction market right now is something like I've never seen. They have, you can have a contract, you can have a bid, and the bidders will guarantee the price for a week or two weeks only, so you got to get going. The subcontractors may have a contract with the construction manager. They may be procuring, you get shop drawings approved and they're procuring it. The manufacturer may come back and say, hey, we just had a 20% hit, your price is 20% more. Subcontractor takes it and says, what can I do? At that point, you cancel the contract and go with somebody else, or you do it. It is, the faster you can get to contract, the faster you can get ordered, the faster you can get products here, the better, and get them here. One example is, three weeks ago, commercial glass went up 40%, and right now HVAC rooftop units are about a 52-week lead time. So if you think about that, we got a two-year construction timeframe and it takes a year to get the rooftop units. So those are going to be one of the very first things that are at work. So in this model, we're working with the construction manager, we're bidding all these packages, we're locking in the prices all the way through. Piece with the construction manager at risk is also, you can start off with them at the beginning, and they give you what's called a guaranteed maximum price. And that guaranteed maximum price means that's as high as it's going to be. We're going to bid all the subs, that's as high as the price is going to be for this scope of work, and you lock that price in early so that you know the top end, and then as they're bidding to all the subs going through the process, then those come in underneath that. We start construction in March, we finish in March of 2025. So start in March of 2023, finish in March of 2025, and then you can see on the chart there, those three or four months of flex construction time. Two reasons to have that, well, actually three, in this scenario. Having a construction manager on board earlier helps us also lock in superintendent and project managers and everybody that's going to work on the job. Having that flex time in there is, you wouldn't be shocked about everything that's happened in the construction market in the last two years, but you would be if you heard about all of it, that you can't get steel for three months, and that throws everything out of whack. You can't get tile, it's stuck in a boat out in San Diego. I mean, there's every story you can think of, of you need that extra flex time to make sure that if something like that comes up in the process, you've got some extra time built in to be able to accommodate that. And if not, everything goes great, you get the building in March, that's fine, it's perfectly fine to have it done, have the keys, us and the contractor gone and move forward. So those are the three scenarios we came up with. Start design after the bond passes, if the election's called. Start full design right now, or contract for partial design, and procure a construction manager at risk. So potential pre-bond costs. So if you look at option A, pre-bond district expenditures are nothing. Until the bond passes, you don't spend anything. Middle school would open August 2026, project bid September of '23. This method, this scenario is adding six months, which is seven and a half percent escalation, which you can see is $6.5 million, plus or minus. It's a lot. Option B, begin full design in August. So pre-bond district expenditures are the whole fee for our work. New middle school will open in August of 2025, so you have a construction period of 24 months. Project bids June 23. You've reduced the escalation sum by a few months to 5% because you're backing up from a few months in order to capture some of that escalation. So that's about 4.2 million. Option C is the one that pre-bond expenditures are our architecture and our engineering team fees through design development, which is a portion of our fees. Middle school opens in August of 2025. Bids in multiple packages from the beginning of the year to May, which is that locks in that GMP price earlier, and the escalation, we still got some escalation because we still didn't go from May, we're going to August, so we're, we got a three-month, so we get about $2 million of escalation plugged in there. The one caveat to option C, as I said, is that hiring a pre-construction team, declaring a delivery method and hiring a construction team to work with us is critical to make this whole process work to get ahead of the game. So we're going through the recommended option, which is what Kevin and Bill are going to present, is move forward, calling a November bond election for a 1,200-student middle school on the Oval site in West Side of Red Oak ISD, which you already own. Begin design now, 1st of August. Board approve a construction delivery method at your August school board meeting, so that's part of the process, is the board has to declare a construction delivery method and approve that for the project. And I can go through all the different options at a later date that you have in front of you. Advertise an RFQ process to select a construction manager, so that's going to take six weeks at least to do that. You've got to write the RFQ, we've got to put it on the street, got to interview to bring a recommendation to you in September. So then the construction manager will have September, October, and to the bond election to get ahead of the game, and that's as fast as we can go. And then here, we have a schematic design presented to the school board, and then you can present it to the community in October. So from your October board meeting to Election Day, I'll show you some examples of some images that you can have to roll out to the community and say, pre-designed, here's what it's going to be looking like. And then everybody can know, oh, okay, it's like that, that's great, and questions will be answered. In this scenario, there is pre-bond election expenditures by Red Oak ISD, our fees, and then a construction manager pre-construction and their estimating fees. That's would still to be negotiated if you declare that delivery method and move forward with that. Tonight, it would just be us. So I don't know, I'm just presenting, so I don't know if there's any questions or just keep going. Okay. So one of the things that we did last year with Tyler ISD was they hired us in May of two thousand and twenty-one for an election that they had in May of two thousand and twenty-two. They did that with funds that they had from a previous savings from a previous bond. They did that to get ahead of the curve on escalation, knew that was coming. We had a year and we did a full design, the whole process. We also bid the project. So when they had their election in May, we had bids for those two projects, early college project and a middle school project. The early college had been bid, talked to the contractors, got a recommendation, took it to the school board, awarded it in May. The middle school was right after that and they awarded that in June. They did that in order to get ahead escalation, as I said, get ahead of the curve. They had savings from previous bonds that they they utilized for this and the board approved that and they moved forward. But in this whole process, as as they called the election in February, we were about eight months into the process. So we were able to show these drawings that I'm gonna show you to the community of this is what the design looks like. And this happened to be the Hubbard example. So they saw the site plan, saw what it looked like, where it was gonna be sighted, how the roads were gonna work. And as it says, this is an example, this isn't yours at all. This is just just showing as a reference of of images that you could have or see and show your community. A floor plan shows how the floor is laid out, where the spaces are. A rendering of what the outside could look like. As I said, this is their school, not yours, just an example. And then a rendering of a couple renderings of what the inside could look like, some different spaces in there. Just to show people, get them excited about the school, be they'd be able to understand what's gonna happen and what it'll look like. And then there's another one of Media Center. So with that, I don't have any more voice, so I'm done. Let's hear some questions.
Anybody have questions?
Well, I don't know if it's now or later, but so how many? I I don't think it's to you I should ask this. I think it's to our school. And the question is, how many requests for qualifications do we put out for architects? I mean, we've got a gentleman here and he represents an architect.
So we went through that process. It's been a few years since we did it, but we we probably interviewed, I don't know, six, seven, eight different architects when we went through the process. We had an architect that they used for a long time. Some of the buildings that you see, some of the things that you see are a result of that. You go to the football stadium, you notice the press box doesn't butt up to the stands. That you get what you pay for, right? So we we opened it up, we wanted to make a change, we opened it up and we had we had quite a few that that applied and we went through a process of interviewing. We went with Corrigan and we partnered with them and, you know, we haven't had any issues. We've liked the schools that they've done, so that's, you know, there's a reason why they build a lot of schools in this area. There's a reason why we've used them to to repeat. Had we had issues of what they the the process, if it been a bad bad process, bad designs, bad schools, we would have opened it back up and and go again. I mean, it adds another another layer into the into the mix, right? So that's the reason. I mean, we haven't gone out for for anybody else, but we did go through that process. I can't tell you when it was, but we did go through the process. What's that? There you go. So so I have a couple of questions. You know, when we look at, you talk about the savings, the time, so, you know, from weather. If I'm talking about if you went to pre-pre-design, pre-bond work, right? We still could have issues from a weather standpoint, we still could have issues from, we can't get parts, we can't get materials. What do you see? You know, on one hand, I see if you if you wait, eventually the supply chain is gonna gonna correct itself, right? And it'll you'll be able to get the material that you get. Right now, a lot of people are going out and buying everything that they can get to do their to do their projects that they have now, right? So what is the what is the? I know it would push it out a year potentially to two thousand and twenty-six. So you have, you know, another year that you have kids overcrowding situation in middle school. But what's the risk of if you went option B or option C of being able to hit that? I mean, in your in your opinion, what's the risk to be able to hit that?
To hit the price or to hit the schedule?
Schedule.
Schedule. So in in all of these three schedules, the twenty-four months allocates, and it's like fifty-five days in our area, a year of construction weather days. So that is already built into the standard contract that the construction team would have. Because we do have, it rains, it snows, it's whatever happens, we do have those. So they plug that into their schedule and that's already allocated. Now, if you go above those, and that's just the average days that the weather service puts out and and all of construction uses that same thing. But we do have events where, you know, it rains for three weeks in a row. It goes over those dates that they're allocated, then they will extend the contract. And that's exactly why I call the the flex time there is that if we have a crazy weather event, if we have a product that we can't get, if something something comes up that slows the project down, then you have some extra built-in time. Besides the twenty-four normal schedule that has the normal time plugged in per year, you have a little bit extra for those unknowns. And like I said, it's it's that schedule twenty-four months of starting and finishing in August is done in a lot of places. It's it happens and it can be achieved. I'm not gonna say it won't. It could be achieved, but it has been achieved. It's being achieved right now. Makes the the rear end of, or not the rear end, the back end of the schedule a little more tenuous when you come to this time of year right now, which is contractors trying to get, you're trying to get them out, trying to get your furniture set up. It's all those, everybody's in the building at once. So that's why I said have a little bit more time, but twenty-four months is normal. That's a typical.
Okay, so if if you went options A, I mean, B or C, you're saying you you see no reason why we shouldn't be able to start in August of two thousand and twenty-five? Even with bad, some bad weather days?
Even with bad weather days, even with supply chain issues, even with products that we couldn't get or something, no issue.
But if you went with option A, we're for sure not gonna start in August of two thousand and twenty-five?
No, no, there's no way, because that's only about seventeen months construction.
Sure.
I I wouldn't even want, in this market, I wouldn't even want to try to ask a contractor to do that because they're gonna add acceleration costs on top of that. And with the labor shortages there are now and the materials, I don't know that we could even get somebody to sign up to do a super accelerated project like that today. Five years ago, eight years ago, when the market was tighter, maybe, but not not today.
Yeah, I know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of construction going on everywhere. I I work in the semiconductor industry and companies are expanding like crazy, so they're locking up material contractors. When we did shields, we had some bad weather days for shields that extended it out a little bit where they worked on some Saturdays and they worked a little bit longer times to hit their timelines, right? Why did shields? I can't remember. I think it was the second time after they were doing the storm work to get to hit the target. Yeah, my my biggest concern was more about the the, I mean, the the cost is unknown, right? You don't know what's gonna what it's gonna cost until you bid it out and and see. But it's it's the timeline. So really, the the decision is, do you wanna start August twenty-fifth or you wanna start in twenty twenty-five or you wanna start in twenty twenty-six?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we will have an action item on that here in a little bit. I I wanted to address a couple of other things too that have been kind of some hot topics, just to kind of do some clarification on. I want to talk about dress code and enforcement. Anybody that's on social media knows that's kind of been a hot topic here lately, so I just wanted to do some clarifications on that. We will have the student code of conduct presented at a later meeting in August. However, I did wanna talk about the enforcement as well. We listened to parents and to student organizations and they have consistently, ever since I've been here, asked for more clothing options on the dress menu. So we have afforded those options through expanding allowable colors and patterns on clothing. There are still some requirements I just wanted to kind of go over. You can go on our website, www.redoakisd.org backslash dress code, and you can see the entire thing. I'm not gonna read it to you, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate some questions that have been coming up. There are still no holes, rips or tears. There are no hoodies allowed, no slides, and by that we mean no backless shoes. A lot of the kids like those athletic slides that don't have backs on them. No slides are allowed. We are allowing closed-toed crocs that have the back strap. No body piercings other than the ears, so just to kind of verify, no tongue rings, no lip rings, no nose rings, no eyebrow rings and things of that such, only ears. No, this has been a big one that I wanted to to clarify because I've had questions from not just Facebook and things like that, but also from the board as well about the unnatural hair color. So it's no unnatural hair color, such as no green, no pink, no purple, no blue. Unfortunately, we could not list the entire crayon box in that. So we also added on top of that that we have no other unnatural hair color that's a substantial disruption. I think the normal person could understand what we're trying to do there. It lists all of those colors, but it also says no unnatural colors that are substantial disruption. Again, we couldn't just go no rainbow. We we just had to say say it that way, so I hope that clarifies. Another big contingency that we've been dealing with on Facebook and social media is the backpacks. We are saying clear backpacks are required for secondary and preferred for elementary. Mesh pockets where the water bottles sit are allowed because even the clear backpacks have that. It's just the little mesh section where you can actually put a water bottle in. But no mesh backpacks. They have to be clear, but they can have the mesh pockets on the side for water bottles. This is a big one. Student IDs and staff IDs will be worn and visible at all times. And that is for a safety issue as well. So that's gonna be all times they'll be doing that. So with added privileges, we know there comes enforcement. And so we are going to be very strict in enforcing what we do have in place. I've been telling everybody, and so I'll say it here publicly as well. I do not want to hear, that's not how we did it last year, because it's not last year, it's this year. So this year we are going to enforce it. So we're trying to make that very clear to our parents, to our to our students. We're putting it out there in forums of social media. We're sending out letters to everyone. Don't show up and think we're going to let it slide this year. It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. We're going to enforce it. So with that being said, there will be no students allowed back in class who are out of dress code. So I'm a teacher, kid walks in my class, they're out of dress code, I send them down to the principal's office. They won't be back unless the parents have brought clothing for them to change that's appropriate, or they can sit in ISS for the day. No more of this, go back to class and we'll handle it tomorrow. It's very simple, follow the rules. I just think that's very simple. If we do it from the very beginning, we shouldn't have any trouble with teachers, parents, administrators, we should all, students should be following the rules. So we did change the enforcement. In the past, it was for every dress code violation, it was one point on the secondary disciplinary scale. Again, we're allowing a lot of leeway, giving a lot of options to these kids. That's what they, everyone's asking for. We try to be diligent in listening. So again, we're allowing a lot. So again, my expectation is to follow the rules. So now instead of one point on the disciplinary code, it's gonna be five points. Every time a kid, a student is out of dress code, it's five points on the disciplinary point scale. Elementary will be following their disciplinary plan. Again, students will not go back to class if they're out of compliance with the dress code. They will either have parents bring them something to change into, or they'll sit in ISS for the remainder of the day. I've had some parents say, that's not fair. My kid will be out of the educational setting, then make your kid follow the rules. I'm sorry, it's that simple to me. If we have rules, then we follow the rules. I can't stress enough the accountability that I expect in this area. I'm stressing it to my teachers, I'm stressing it to my administration. We're gonna follow the rules. I mean, to me, it's very, very simple. Like I said, you have something set out there, you just follow it. So with that, I'm asking parents, community, administration, teachers, staff, everybody join together. If we're all on the same track, going the same direction, we're gonna get there. So again, just asking everyone publicly just to make that stand that we're going to work together and then we're going to hold our children to that expectation. We're gonna hold our administration to that expectation and we're going to see some changes in that area. So just want to kind of make that clear. Any questions on that? Now I can direct everybody to the recording.
I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
You knew they were coming.
I knew they were coming.
So what is a, how did you put it? Reasonable disruption?
Substantial.
Substantial disruption. What what is that?
The way that that I'm saying it is any unnatural hair color. I understand that if you color your hair red, which is a natural color, some shades of red, that it might be a little different on your hair as it is mine, just the way that it the tense comes. To me, that if you're coloring your hair a natural color, which is the blonde, red, black, brown, those are natural colors, then that's not a substantial disruption. But if you come with a crayon box, turquoise, any shade of blue, any shade of pink, any shade of purple, any shade of green, that's a substantial disruption. Rainbow, that's a substantial disruption.
So and and I know you're communicating that to the your staff and the parents. How are we getting the message to the kids? Because you you read on Facebook, you read on, you know, wherever, and it's the same conversation over and over and over. You can you can say we're gonna enforce it, we're gonna enforce it, but it's gotta get past the parents because obviously the parents aren't having conversations with their students. So that's where it starts.
Absolutely. One thing we're going to do, we've been discussing this in cabinet for several weeks. We're going to dispatch the ESC. We have quite a few people at the ESC building. We're gonna dispatch those first couple of weeks of school. We hope it will work the first week. If not, we'll go into the second. If not, we'll go into the third. We're gonna split up on the element, I mean, the middle school and the high school campuses. And we're going to be the dress code police before they ever get in the building. And if the parents dropping them off and they have blue hair, they're gonna get back in the car and go back, or they're gonna have to sit in ISS for the day. So I think it's a training mechanism more than anything that if from the administration level, if we're showing them this is true, this is what we our expectation is, then we'll do it that way. Same is for teachers. I do not expect my staff to come with a rainbow hair and piercings. I mean, that's the same for them. We have that same expectation for them as well. So if they come to school, they're gonna be going home and they can take a sick day because they they're gonna be treated the same way as far as that goes. But I think it's a training thing. I think we have really, really, well, we all know it, we've talked about it a lot. We've really been lenient over the past few years. We blamed it on COVID, we blamed it on everything in the world, but it's time just to draw that line in the sand and say, hey, here's our expectations. We're giving you a lot. We're giving them a lot, allowing them to do the different colors in clothing and different patterns. And so now my expectations are high that we follow those rules.
So and just to clarify, for those who are here and those who may be listening or those who may watch it later down the road, from the board's standpoint, the board has a policy of having a dress menu. What goes in that dress menu, how it's enforced, board has nothing to do with that. We're not telling them what to put in it. We're not telling them what kind of clothes to wear, what not to wear. That's administration, cabinet, principals. They put that package together and I from from my standpoint, the only thing I I that I said was have what you want, just enforce what you what you have, right? So and that's and that's kind of I think from the, you know, I'm not gonna speak for the board, they can speak for themselves. But from my standpoint, it's not, it's not the school board making all these changes. It's it's administration trying to get a handle on this. And we ask the parents that, you know, if you don't want your kid to to miss a class, pretty simple. Send them on the right clothes and they'll sit in class where they're supposed to be. Otherwise, they're gonna go somewhere else. I mean, you know, same thing with with the badges. We we worry about security. That was one of the questions. Are you gonna talk about security?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let you I'll let you think about that.
So I want to back on what John said.
So I want to piggyback on what John said is like, listen, you've been given a lot of rope, kids, a lot of rope. Don't take advantage of it. I promise you, if Garrett Sebring, that kid is wild. And I told him, I said, if I get one call about dress code for you, it's going to be, you may not get a 16th birthday kiddo. But don't, they've gone out of their way to be accommodating and to do the things that you wanted to have to say that I have a say so in, okay? Tough stuff, you don't get slides. Tough stuff, you don't get hoodies. Maybe we can have your attention, okay? Don't take advantage of it, please, please.
There's always the weekend. Wear your slides and hoodies on the weekend. All right, just wanted to clarify that because like I said, I know there's been a lot of things out there, even comments about, oh, they don't enforce it. I promise you, it will be enforced. It's going to be enforced and it's, some people won't be happy, but we're going to follow the rules. So safety and security. I want to touch on some things on safety and security. And then I believe Chief is here. If y'all have any other further questions after I kind of touched on some things. That's of course a hot topic and a necessary topic. Our main priority is to keep our kids safe. That's number one, to make sure they are safe and secure. So we still keep that at the forefront of everything that we're doing and all of our decisions at all times. I just wanted to let you know that we do partner with Red Oak and Glen Heights Police and Fire Departments, and we work together and share our resources. And we can collaborate to improve the school safety. We have a lot of school safety meetings and a lot of different things that go on. Red Oak ISD Police Department has first responder group training to enhance campus security and review emergency response protocols. And this training's been in the works somewhere around 1st of January, maybe even back into December. And everyone involved understands that collaboration is essential to make sure that our students and our staff are safe. So we do continue to invest in the additional safety measures, including upgraded cameras, additional personnel, and the use of metal detectors. We have police officers assigned to each campus with additional security staff at the middle school and the high school. All visitors are required to enter through the main front entrance. We met today, Chief and Kevin and myself, and talked through a lot of this as well. We're going to be training staff on this as well. But all visitors will be required to enter through the main front entrance of the campus and they must acquire a visitor pass. Campus entry points are very limited and we're monitoring those daily. We do have some things we're putting in place there as well. Starting this fall, like I talked about, we're going to clear backpacks. They'll be required for all secondary and they're preferred for elementary. Students with extracurricular bags, this was another thing that was a hot topic. They'll be required to place those bags in their activity area before their first class. So if they have an athletic bag, they'll take it to athletics and place it in that facility. If they have a fine arts bag, they'll take that to fine arts, place it in that facility and so forth like that. Beginning on the first day, all students and staff will be required to have their school ID badges on and visible while on campus. Again, that's a training piece because with COVID, we got away from that. It's necessary. So we are going to really strictly enforce that. Badges are a necessity. We expect everybody to follow the procedures in place when they're on the campus. Everyone will enter in the proper entrance, have their Red Oak ISD visitor ID badge visible at all times. We encourage people to use the Stop It app to report inappropriate behaviors and bullying and other concerns. We have numerous additional safety measures that have been implemented on multiple fronts. I will tell you, to ensure the integrity and the safety of those measures, we do not divulge all specific details. And I think you can understand why. We don't want to put out there, this is what we do, because then someone can plan how to get around it. So that's why we don't divulge all information on our safety measures. And please know that every effort is being made and we are very cognizant of keeping all the children safe. So specific questions?
Do you want to go? So do we have, so I know that we had a parent, an upset parent, enter through a door that was opened by somebody not through the front of the building last year. Do we have a repercussion, consequences for people who are opening doors for outside visitors in place? Can we make some if we don't have them? Are those entrances and exits have cameras where we can see those things and hold people accountable to those things?
Yes, they do. Chief, would you mind talking about the entrances? We talked about this today as well. But yes, I mean, we can, training the people we know is the main thing, not just students, but staff as well. Don't prop your doors open, don't use your magnets. I mean, doors need to be locked and things like that need to happen. So it's training, a training mechanism. We talked about going through that today. We also talked about limiting access and where we're going to funnel students, so.
We want to limit it for the buildings. Obviously, the secondary campuses are the biggest and have the most amount of doors. So we want to work on knowing, is it on? Hello?
There you go.
We want to limit to specific doors. And then obviously you still have to monitor the other doors. I mean, as far as your question, I believe you probably, I mean, again, that's on the administrative side, but that would be a disruption to the classes going on. So I've assumed that could be handled administratively. We could help identify students if we can catch them on camera. So yes, that's possible. I think in my opinion, from the enforcement side, police wise, no, probably not much you can do. But on the administrative side, that'd be a disruption to classes.
We even discussed, we're going to be working through some ESSR funds and things like that for someone who actually could monitor all cameras.
Right, the cameras are a big advantage, but it's a double edged sword. If a security guy or a security staff member or officer is viewing cameras, you know, they're not as visible. But the camera part of it, that piece is important because you can actually see a lot more on the cameras. And I know I've talked to Mr. Gatewood and he talked, you know, how that last year there was a lot of success with finding stuff ongoing through the cameras and you could send somebody immediately to that area because you see it on camera. So it's a trade off. So additional help there would be great.
Like I said, if we have an officer sitting watching cameras that are not visible out on the campus and they can't do both. So we talked about that today and trying to look at possible ESSR funding for possibly having someone technology wise that could actually monitor all cameras. That way our officers can be out and about more visible and not sitting watching cameras.
And that was my next thing is that regardless of the cameras are, how it's been explained to me on several instances is that our officers aren't being visible in the hallways in checking, you know, sometimes it might be they're checking doors and parameters and stuff, perimeter and stuff. But I think that we should have people in local areas checking those doors to make sure that they're closed after passing periods, so on and so forth, before they begin their class. I know that it's taking away from a few seconds of class time, but you have to, in the day and age that we live in, we have to utilize all of our resources. And it's really important that our officers are super visible. It's just a huge deterrent.
That's what we talked about today is it's just the balance. So we're just looking at avenues that might be able to help us with that.
Yeah, and I'm just reporting to y'all the things that have been said to me that, hey, we don't see them or we only see them at a ballgame or we only see them, they need to be seen throughout the day in building those relationships with kids, but also know that, you know, there's a consequence standing on the other end of that.
The superintendent and I have talked about this. Like I said, I mean, there's times, priority times that they're always out and then there's downtimes, reporting. I mean, I do the reports on, you know, the amount of reports that are written. And that, I mean, that takes the office time, so does that fine line. So we're trying to figure out the maximum.
I'm not trying to call anybody out, Chief. I just want to make sure.
We've been talking about it, but it's that maximum time. And like you have, one of the officers at one particular campus is also the investigator. And we had a number of cases last year that takes time as well. So there are reasons sometimes that not everybody would know. But then there's also times that we addressed today at a meeting today. And I have another staff meeting, a staff meeting today and another staff meeting in two weeks when the entire staff comes back about some of the priorities. And one of the main priorities we talked about was increased visibility. And then tracking that as well, so.
Thank you. So when the kids walk to TSTC, are they going out one door, coming back that same door?
We're still working logistics and I'll have to defer to Kevin on that.
I know, but if you're in, I've been in the cafeteria with the mentor kid and kid's banging on the cafeteria door. They come open the door. I tell them to go around. He stops, texts somebody, they come down and open the door for him.
Well, I think that, well, the back door of the cafeteria is the rear exit and entrance. And what we did toward corrected or added at the end toward the end of the year is during those passive periods when that would occur, during those times, we're putting somebody at that door. So they're monitoring that and they can see that way the inside, make sure nobody else.
So when the kids park in the back, they're coming through the cafeteria door?
Yes.
And if they come in between, because some have late arrival.
They come in the back.
Classes are on, they're supposed to go through those cafeteria doors?
Yes, sir.
So all of our kids going to TSTC, we should go in and out those doors then?
Oh, I agree, yeah, that, it wouldn't be.
I thought we were using the one down by the gym, no?
Yeah.
Get a little hallway? Okay. We just need to be able to adjust.
Yeah, that one's a work in progress. I still have to meet with the TSTC police end of that, which is not this part of the process, but there's other things going on with that. I don't know, IT has met with them, Kevin and his folks met with them. It's an ongoing process for the next two weeks.
I just think from a safety standpoint, that's another, that's something else we need to communicate to the kids. I mean, you can have all the police officers and safety measures you want, but if kids are just going and opening doors for their buddies letting them in and out.
That's the education piece with the students and their parents. I mean, and I think, you know, it was said recently on one of those posts is you got to help us with that as well.
Because the side door coming from athletics is open. I think that's pretty much.
It's not open all the time. It's open during that passive, those passing periods. But we're also working, I'm not going to discuss in public forum, but we also, I've worked with Chris Anderson and Coach Holmes and we've got some things to help with that.
But the input is important. When you hear things, to let us know because there may be something going on that our eyes don't see. So definitely keep us updated if you see or hear anything that's a concern.
On the metal detectors, I heard Marty's comment. Anything happening on that?
As far as the metal detectors that we have, we discussed that as well today.
Yeah, I can address that a little bit. I mean, we will use those. They're not all the time, you can't use them all the time. There's not enough, there's not enough doors to use them all the time. And there's not enough staff to monitor them all the time. And if you try to funnel everybody through one door, you create what's called a fatal funnel. You just leave a lot of people there exposed, so.
They do it randomly, three and three, right?
Yeah, we have worked with, we're working with Mr. Gatewood and Mr. Waller and they all have plans, especially at the first year, but then randomly and they will be used. It's just we cannot use them every day.
I believe there's three at the high school and three at the middle school.
If that was your answer. Three and three, yes.
Okay, okay. And I'm almost done, just real quick. Okay, just a couple of real quick reminders. We do have our back to school fair, we call it the back to school bash on August the 6th at the high school from 8:30 to 11:30. Convocation will be August the 8th, so board, we would love to have you there as well, 9:00 AM. August the 11th is the Red Oak ISD Meet the Teacher at all elementary campuses. August 15th is the first day of school. And then August the 22nd, we will have Meet the Hawks at 7:30 at Goodlow Stadium. So just a couple of things just to have kind of on your radar. I know that was lengthy, but that's my report.
I think there are a couple that came in at the end. I may still have a, does anybody in the audience have a form they need to turn in? No? Okay, we're going to move to our open forum section. And now we move to the public comment session of our agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens who have completed public comments forums this evening, which are accepted prior to the start of the meeting and are transferable to other speakers. Please be advised that the information shared in public comment is the opinion of the individual speaker, not the district. Two minutes per person have been allotted for public comments. Please keep all public comments related to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in the board policies on the district website. Finally, remember, the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not properly posted on the agenda. When I call your name, if you'll step to the microphone and just state your name and then you, whenever you feel comfortable and ready to start, let me know and he'll start the clock. And I apologize upfront if I butchered your name. Michelle Hillary?
Name is Michelle Hillary. Michelle Hillary, I can't read my notes. So I listened to the engineer architect description of what was going to be asked for, for a plan. And you know, I do appreciate planning. I think that's a great thing to do. But speaking as a taxpayer, it almost sounds like this assumes that the bond, if there is one, is going to be approved, which is a little unsettling. The other is, you know, where, I'd like to find out, you know, in terms of any analysis that was done on this in the presentation tonight for cost overruns or cost sharing? If there ends up being a problem with materials, labor, you know, supplies? How is that going to be worked out to the city or the taxpayer advantage or the city? What are the contingency plans? You know, could there be future discounts? We talk about how everything goes up. But again, if the supply chain catches up, is there possibly we could get a discount? So it's more of an accounting exercise. Are we considering this cost, a sunk cost that we won't get back? You know, where is it accounted for in the funding and the budget right now? Is that just something the taxpayer is just going to say, okay, the bond wasn't approved, there wasn't any money, but we're going to be charged a taxes anyway? And you know, the other thing is maybe contractually, there can be some verbiage that really protects the taxpayers here and the children and, you know, the future betterment of the school district. So those are the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Dosher?
Hello, my name's Crystal Dosher and I'm ready. I just want to say that you are going to hear and going to hear from very mid, sorry, I don't like public speaking, but this is important, so I'm going to do it anyways. You're going to hear from several community members that support a new middle school and support approving Corrigan to start plans now. I encourage you to look at the audience. I assure you that all of the people in support have stayed awake the entire meeting and have been engaged in the process since the beginning up until now and will continue to do so going forward. Thank you for seeking community input through town halls and surveys. Thank you for freeing up space by sending kids to TSTC. That partnership is very important. And in the CTE building, moving them over to the high school so that we have more space at the middle school. I'm glad that you're thinking outside of the box and that means a lot to us. And for also finding ways to fund some projects without a bond, such as the elementary playgrounds. I'm disappointed in seeing portables at several campuses, but I'm thankful to have an immediate Band-Aid for the dire situation at the middle school. Thank you for sharing and providing some of the safety updates to our campus and for keeping that our number one priority. A new middle school is desperately needed. Like every single one of the board members has said in the past, I encourage you all and I expect to see support for that middle school from all of you. I'm going to be very disappointed if anyone abstains from the vote. I encourage you to approve Plan C and get the ball rolling. This will save more money in the long run and makes more sense. We don't have time to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Foster? Oh, sorry. Good catch.
Good evening. Bill Foster? I've read and reread my prepared statements. Thank you, darling. I've read and reread my prepared statements and thought, you know, before I come across this being a rant, because it's about the money. I better tell you all where I come from, okay? Prior to retirement, I spent 45 years in multiple industries, manufacturing, oilfield. In almost every case, and I was in management, where I did a project, I was. In almost every case, uh, and I was in management, where I did a project, I was required to have three bids from the vendors. Now, this was for two reasons really. First off, it made certain that I was honest, that I wasn't hiring my idiot brother, my cousin, Joe Blow, who I used to drink beer with at A&amp;M. He was not my vendor of choice only, okay? So I had three. Pick the cheapest one, pick the fastest one, pick the best one. There was a choice, didn't have to be the cheapest. But also it was to make those vendors use a sharp pencil when they gave you a bid. I really liked what the man from Corrigan said this evening. He's good, especially the part about hiring the, the construction manager first. That's my bailiwick. He was singing to me right there. Okay. Now, that being said, you know where I'm coming from, okay? Red Oak ISD does not have our permission to engage any architect without a public hearing of construction scenarios from multiple architects. We will instruct ROSD with whom to do business and at what cost. We do not give ROSD permission to think for us. We will instruct ROSD how to spend our money. Quit wasting our money preparing bond calls for projects we have not pre-approved. Now, it seems like y'all are going this direction, so this is a good thing. How many bonds need to fail before ROSD administration understands we, the taxpayers, will tell you the terms for the successful bond? ROSD does not have our permission to spend our money without bids for a project. Again, going back to my multiple bids background. We must have a public hearing so we can tell you what we want to build and we do need a new middle school. Those kids is hurting over there. Then you can get multiple architects to give scenarios and proposals of their design cost. Our bank account is not your bank account and mine has a finite deal there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brian Bell?
Good evening. Brian Bell, uh, 919 Summer Hill Lane. Uh, just want to say that I fully support, uh, taking option three and getting started on this process. You know, as the gentleman said, we got to have the middle school. It's going to happen, so we might as well get started and get it going. I'm here kind of in three different positions. Uh, first off, I'm a member of what was deemed the yes group in the spring. And with that, I ask that we keep these plans and what we learned from our friends on the other side, keep them simple. You know, uh, we don't want a prison look, but they obviously don't, are not going to support anything that's gaudy or crazy, so let's keep them simple. Now, as a parent, I say that we still need certain things in that school and in that building. So I ask you to get us what we need and mostly I'm talking to Mr. Causey here and, and make sure that it, it has what we need. Uh, as a teacher, uh, safety is a concern now. Uh, I did work at a school here in Red Oak and I'm moving schools. Uh, but let's try to get doors without big glass next to them. It's something I'm, I'm pretty passionate about with the safety thing. Uh, so you know, when those renderings come out, I'd like to see that, um, just as a teacher myself. Uh, there's people here who represent side that says they won't, you'll vote yes without plans and now they're here. Uh, and, and I'm not saying these people specifically, but they represent that side and now they're here saying, well, now don't spend money on plans. So, uh, my question to them is what can we do to make you guys happy? You know, you've, the instructions you give to us and to this board is when you go vote. Uh, two people up here ran unopposed this spring. So when you vote for your school board members, that's when you give them instructions and permission. So I ask, go run. If you want to have a say, go run. The people of this community have put our trust into these people to pick our architects and write our contracts and sign our contracts. Don't show up now and say you want a voice. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Creighton?
I think that everything that I'm going to say has been said before, but let me add my voice to Bill and let me bring in some real world experience. Every time that we've gone to build a building, we have always had at least three bids and we've opened it up to everybody. Now, I understand that y'all went through this process back in 2006 and this process is not easy, but it's where you're going to get the best quality, the best return for your dollar, sorry, best return for our dollar. Amen. So all I'm saying is do the due diligence. Go through the normal process of product, project management. Get your bids, open it up to everybody because I, I guarantee you, there are companies out there that want our money, that want my money, if it's my project. And they will come to me and they'll, you know, submit proposals, they'll submit drawings, they'll submit photos, workups, all that. And I don't have to go pay them 1.3 million dollars to go do that for me because they want my money. Come earn my money. That's all I have to say.
Thanks.
Oh, no, I take that back. We need open forum to get the, get the, uh, the people's input on what to go forward with.
Donnie Lutrick?
Hello, I'm Donnie Lutrick. I live at 100 Woodbridge here in Red Oak. Thank you for a moment of your time this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the administration for quickly moving ahead with, uh, taking some type of action to meet this need. Frankly, if we had done this five years ago, maybe we wouldn't be standing here today dealing with this. And, uh, we, and it's that long or longer that we've been dealing with this problem. So thank you for bringing this up and quickly moving, uh, on. There's really no question that our middle school is overcrowded. I mean, I, I don't believe anyone really believes that or sees that. We know that impacts learning first and foremost. It impacts opportunity for student involvement in activities, sports, extracurriculars that go along and really help make school, school. Whenever there's just, there's only so many spots though on the basketball team and so many opportunities to be on the yearbook staff or on some type of, um, other, other program. And it is at that point in so many students' lives where they're still trying to figure out who they are. And some of these activities and things really become so important for them to find places so that they don't end up in places that are more difficult and in situations that are more difficult. It in fact, it impacts greatly the mental health of our students and I would dare say our staff's mental health. And I think we have a strong responsibility for that. We may not necessarily all agree on how to deal with some of these issues, but can't we agree that not having a school so large that it's so intimidating that we hear students not wanting to attend? It's time for us to stop letting this be some pawn in a bigger political partisan game that's trying to undermine, uh, public education in our state and do what's right for our students. As a Christian, I strongly believe it is our responsibility to uphold and build our community and isn't schools really the center of what makes Red Oak a community?
Thank you. Ann Griffin?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Many of the things that I wanted to mention not have been brought up and I'm going to try to shorten a little bit of what I had to say, but I'm here mainly to say that I, I understand we need a middle school. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't know that. We're not here to say no to everything. We're not here to slap hands for everybody, but we are here as taxpayers to say, please let us have a, let us have a voice at the table. It's hard to stomach 1.3 million dollar expenditure for something that we don't even know anything about. Now, um, Superintendent Sanford, I appreciate what you said, although I don't know when this happened. You said you listen to taxpayers. I think that's great. I just wish I'd known when that happened. I don't know of any public forum that took place that involved our input. Honestly, I think that we need more, I think that the taxpayers need to be told about something before we're asked to pre-approve anything, especially a pre-bond, uh, expense for something that hasn't happened yet and we really don't even know anything about, about. So here are some questions that I would have as a taxpayer after just having seen this proposal. Uh, you're asking for the board to approve 1.3 million dollars for fees that are incurred that are really already developed, it sounds like to me. The scenarios are already there for the new middle school, but we don't know what the parameters are. What were the considerations for that? Who determined the size and scope of the facility? Uh, is it going to be sufficient to meet the needs in the future years? I mean, we don't hear this, so we don't know. Uh, I feel like you're just thinking for us and kind of asking us to rubber stamp it. It's a little bit of a hard pill to swallow, even though I know we need the middle school. We just would like to have a better voice at the table. I do have questions along with the others about the possibility of getting more input as far as bids. Uh, we don't know really what the parameters were and what were determined, why this particular entity was determined to be the architect. Why, 2006 is a long time ago to be taking bids and not, or at least looking at different entities and not following through this year. I'd like to see more of that done, so, um, please consider having more discussion with the community about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Stanfield?
Good evening. Is that better? Okay, I'm Karen Stanfield. I've lived in this district for 22 years and I volunteer in the district for the past 21 years in, in multiple capacities. So I've been in the schools for a long time. And I want to say to the board, I commend you for trying to involve the community and making some changes that you heard from your town halls and the coffees you had and all the other opportunities you had for people to comment. Um, all the things that you went through, Ms. Stanford, that wage you're trying to incorporate comments from the community, I appreciate that. I also applaud you for looking for cost savings and time savings by considering doing architectural plans ahead of time. Um, it's a decision you're charged with making as elected officials for us and I appreciate you, um, trying to save us money. And I wanted to add that, uh, please keep listening to the community. The vast majority of people that I talked to are in support of a middle school, a bond for that, as well as for the other items that we still need in our district. And they will vote this time, so please continue listening to them and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Don Griffin?
Don Griffin, live at 1002 West Red Oak Road. Been a resident for 28 years, so I paid school taxes for 28 years. I'm here to say that, uh, I'm not in favor of this 1.3 million dollar expenditure for something that we, we had no voice in, citizens. Now, I have a question, the, how the selection was made on, as far as any bids, I think there should be at least three bids on it. Also that, uh, your architect, I'm not familiar with them, don't know anything about them. I think it's necessary that we know and that the citizens have a little bit of input into this. You're spending our money. And so I ask you to be more frugal about that and think about that. Your employees are the citizens of this town and you need to remember that. We put, we pay your paycheck and it's, uh, it's not your paycheck, but we pay for you to be there, to manage the money. We expect you to manage that money well. But, uh, we need the school, yes. Nobody, not in favor of that. They shouldn't be because the kids need a school to go to. But, uh, not one that is wasteful in any way whatsoever. So I think that if you would take the time and listen, get some citizen input before you just go out and spend a million and three, or a million and three, uh, you need more input from the citizens and I think that's the best thing you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rebecca Creighton?
Rebecca Creighton. Um, in regards to the administration's recommendation to approve the pre-bond work of the design phase on a new middle school, I would like to ask that this pre-bond work be tabled for a short period of time to, um, gather more input from the taxpaying community. This would certainly increase chances of the bond proposal passing in November. A public hearing and/or a facilities and bond planning advisory committee should be appointed by this board comprised of taxpaying citizens within the ISD to evaluate capital improvement needs and provide insight and recommendations and be hands-on with future bond elections. Try something different than in the past. Welcome input from the citizens and stop just telling us what you're going to do with our money without our input. Remember, the taxpaying citizens voted down the last bond election. Those taxpayers are not going to be happy in November just because they are supplied pretty renderings and pictures, um, of how a middle school can look. They've had no input prior to the 1.3 million dollar pre-bond work being spent. Please do not vote tonight to spend 1.3 million or any existing capital project funds until this advisory board has been, um, put together. Please consider that. I have not heard of any, um, citizens, uh, workshops or anything for this. So please get our input before you spend the money. Thank you.
All right, that's it. That's all for open forum. We're going to move into our action items. Before you have the consent agendas or anything that you want removed, we discussed? Not entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Peterson, a second by Ms. Sebring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Pass the six oh. Next, we have the consideration approval initiation of design phase of new middle school. Mr. Frills?
We are not the dynamic duo. We are standing together here to see. Just to answer a couple of questions that Ms. Story had earlier about architects. In the state of Texas, you can't bid professional services. They are all on requests for qualifications. And in 2006, they did a request for qualifications and they, as Mr. Anderson stated, they interviewed numerous, I don't even, I wasn't here, but they, I know that they did numerous interviews on.
Mr. Stanfield said seven.
Seven, okay.
But you never heard the word bid from me. I asked about qualifications.
Qualifications, and that's what they did. Others have said that word and I just want, you cannot, we cannot do that for, uh, money when it comes to professional services. They get a standard flat fee in the state of Texas. It's 6%. It doesn't matter if it's architect A, B, C, D unless you negotiate otherwise. With us being a smaller district, uh, as Mr. Anderson pointed out, you know, they did the high school, they did Shields, they did Shields twice. Uh, they did the remodeling of the middle school. We've had a good reputation with them. We don't have a, a reason just to throw them and the, what is it, the, throw the bathwater out with the baby because they have not, we've been a good relationship with them and they've done for us. I will say that we have an ag building because they would do that. Some of the architecture firms that do schools wouldn't even design that building for us and they did. So I give them credit to that. So we're coming tonight because as Ms. Ampert alluded to earlier, we were, she's spoken with many people and we're trying to come up with ways to, to, everyone is saying, we've got to put this middle school, we've got to get it going. Well, this, this was another way to start it and to get it going as quick as we could. And so when it comes to procuring the cost, we will have to have multiple bids. We're not just going to choose a contractor. We have to have multiple bids. And we talked about, as Mr. Hulsey talked about CM, the different procurement methods are six, six of them here from the state of Texas. It'll be down to probably just the. It'll be down to probably just the one because it's construction manager at risk. And we're not a large district. We can't do a construction manager agent project because the construction, the building is me and him. We don't have a whole construction department and some of his people that work in his department and mine also. So we don't have, when you have a construction manager agent, the district holds the subcontract, contracts. With a construction manager at risk, they're holding. And so we have less liability. The construction manager at risk, that contractor has the liability, we don't. That is, I would say that the majority, probably 90% plus, larger construction projects in the state of Texas for schools are done that way. The ag building, very, very narrow scope. We're not changing a lot of things. That was competitive seal proposal. And we, we will open that up and do all the legal things we have to do to get multiple bids. So that, that part of it is. We'll get there when we get there. We don't have any bids for anything. I mean, we, we don't have, we don't even have a cost of the building because we haven't gone to that part, as Mr. Halsey said. We will open that up to get input, if you guys vote on that, to get more input about what you want it to look like and that sort of thing. But that's one of the things Ms. Sanford had heard, that we didn't have anything to go by. So now we came up with a plan to try to get some of that. And so that's where we're going. So tonight, y'all read through this. We're looking at the option of the three options. To expedite it, to get it going, to save money, was the option C that we, that Mr. Halsey introduced earlier that would actually start the project as soon. Now I'll let Dr. Johnston talk about the money because that seems to be a, a topic of discussion also.
Yes, just to clarify, this is not an additional 1.3 million that the district will spend. It would be spent after the November election as part of the cost. And as Mr. Frills alluded to, by doing it now versus waiting till November, December, January, we're saving over $4 million of potential inflation costs. So it's actually saving the district and the taxpayers money by doing this. Secondly, there may be some concerns about, well, what if the bond doesn't pass in November? Everybody knows based on our enrollment growth that we will need a new middle school. So it's just continuing to expedite the process if we have to go back at another time for bond election. It's not going to add more cost, it's just going to get the work done, so we're prepared for that. And again, we, we have money, planning to have money at the, as we finish the audit for this last fiscal year, have money for capital projects. A few years ago, we did indicate that we were going to designate some of our fund balance for capital projects, and this would fulfill that obligation that we did two years ago.
I think what I hear from the public out there is that everybody knows they need a school. The way this was written, it's a million three for engineering and design. I think the question I'm hearing out there is, we don't know what the design is. So a forum, and I see Mr. Frills.
Well, but I mean.
The design, okay. They would like to know, you're going to draw some preliminary. That's all good. Plan C is wonderful. But the point is, what if the designs are not what the public wants? How are they dealing with storm shelters? That's got to be dealt with. Can the whole building be one? Yes. Just, just what is the design of that building like? I think the public wants to have a concept of that before they allocate the money.
Well, I do think, again.
Okay. Okay, question. So the plans are coming to the board, okay. So the plans are drawn, the preliminary, just the preliminary with the material list, is that what's coming? The preliminary plans with the material list, is that what's coming?
No. They've got their three plans that they can do the grading work from and everything. They're going to have a pretty good concept of what the building's going to look like. They can't draw half the building, you're missing part of the grading work.
I understand that. My question is, the building is going to look like something, but it's going to be built out of materials. I think what we're looking for, or what they're looking for, the way I understand it, is what will this building, what will the materials be? Absolutely, and that calls for a storm shelter. And so our building, the point is, in discussions with some other, with architects, and this, this architect knows. So the whole building can be a storm shelter instead of a place somewhere in a building. So, you know, that is a concern. That, that would be safe for every teacher and every student at anywhere in the building, if there was. That could be opened up to the community. Our building should be. So those are things that people are looking at, is what is this building built of? Where are you going to put those things, the storm shelter? That's an issue we have to deal with. It's Red Oak. You know, we have to deal with that. Where is that? Is that part of the design, the preliminary design? I think so. So, so the, the architect will put together the preliminary designs and then they'll come to the board. And maybe the public doesn't like what was designed.
But I do think that as part of the design process, the architect will be seeking feedback from the district to, as to what the goal of the board is as far as part of the design.
Well, I think what I hear from the public is they're not looking to the board to make that total decision. They would like to have some input into what they want that building to be like. That's, that's what I hear from them.
Well, they can reach out to the board members.
Okay.
To get, to give, give their input to the board members, so the board members can provide that.
So you're suggesting that whatever their ideas are, that they present that to the board members, then the board members will convey that to the architect, is that?
Some opportunities for, if they have some ideas about designing, we can have a public meeting.
I think that's what they've been asking for, is a couple of public meetings. And I know in the past, people don't show up, but you know what? They've asked for that, so should we consider that? Okay.
Just to clarify, every building that we build, we've got input from the public. The board doesn't make the decision on what these buildings look like? It's not us. We haven't made the decision with, I don't care what the building looks like. It's not my job to decide that. We got that from the public. We've had renderings and gave opportunities for them to, to look at it, give input.
Okay, so we're paying, or, so let me ask this. Are we paying for the renderings upfront?
He's going to give you a rendering of a building.
Right.
You can get some input, and if people know what they want, then give us input what they want, and we can pass it on to the, to the architect. No problem.
So that's what you're telling them? If they've got ideas, pass it on to the board, the board will pass it on to the architect. Then they will prepare the preliminary drawings according to what they've been told.
If you want to have a, if you want to have a public meeting, if you want to have a public meeting and do that, then no problem. We can have public meetings.
I don't know.
But people need to show up. We've had it, we've had a committee. We say we don't have any committees, we say we don't have any committees doing this stuff. Yeah, we've had a committee. That was their job, was to put all these plans together. Just because some people weren't on the committee, doesn't mean we didn't have a committee.
Well, let's don't have a committee, let's just have a public.
We asked for, we need to have a committee to put this together.
Why don't we just have a public hearing? And anybody in the public can show up.
We can do that. We can get all the input. If you look around the district, most of our buildings look very similar to each other. There's a reason for that.
At the end of the day, everybody's not going to be satisfied. So if everybody in here that's spoken wants this, 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 and this, and then everybody over here is spoken want this, this, and this, I think it was Brian that said, I don't want windows. Just because he said he doesn't want it, doesn't mean it's not going to happen. Because somebody else may want windows. They may be bulletproof, they may not. They may be this or that. There's a lot of input that goes into one building. You're going to have satisfied people and unsatisfied people. But if everybody feels like they got their voice heard, I think you will have less contention amongst people. But at some point, it's got to be built. At the end of the day, bottom line, it's going to be built.
But they don't feel their voices heard. That's what you heard tonight.
I'm sure, aren't there, aren't there guidelines? I mean, schools have, schools have totally different guidelines than you saying, well, this is our house, we paid for it. I want this, this, and this. You've got to figure out what the legal guidelines are before you start.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's a whole different ballgame.
So just have this, the forum, have an open forum, let whoever shows up, show up. Tell, let them say, and when they say they want things that don't fit in the legal requirements, you have to say, I'm sorry, we can't build that. Because the law says you can't build that. But they need, they're asking to be heard.
I, I don't think that it's a problem with them being, with them being heard. In fact, I think that as we had six or seven meetings as we went along this year, and I know that, that I went to the one that I was requested to go to. I know that many of you went to the other ones. I'm not, I, I see faces out here. I know the Griffins were at the one that I went to. I know that Brian Bell was at the one that I went to. I know that several of the other people, like, I'm not saying that people don't go, but we have 23,000 voters who, like, they don't show up.
Well, you know, that was yesterday, and so you give them the opportunity, then it's on them if they don't show up.
But do you, do, do you agree that we have to get something started?
We do. So I suggest we have a public hearing rather quickly so they can come, and if they don't come, then it's on them, and it just moves forward.
So my question is, are we just wanting the people that are here tonight to be on that committee because?
There's no committee. It's a public hearing open to how many thousands of people? And those that come, come, and those that don't, don't. No committees, public.
So, so is your record, is, is what you're asking, is that you want to table this today and have a public hearing? And then, and then take, take everything up, shake the magic eight ball, and tell me what I'm getting for 1.3? Is that what you're asking? Poor planning gets poor results.
Well, that's a two-sided comment.
But didn't, didn't we, I mean, this is what I'm confused about tonight. During the bond, I heard a lot of people say, we are against this bond because we don't know what you're talking about. Where are the plans? Where are the plans? Now we've got people trying to give us plans, and people are saying, oh, no, we don't want that.
That's not what they're saying. That's not what they're saying. They're saying they just want some input into what the plans are. You can do it in one meeting. They don't show up, it's on them. If they show up and they tell you what they want, you've heard it, then you can design it. So it, offering, offering the public an opportunity to give an input one time tells you what they want in their plan. If they don't do it, nelly bar the door. It's just going to go on the way it goes on. And if they suggest something that can't be built because of the law, then you say, I can't build it. But they need to be heard, is what I heard tonight.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not, I, like I say, from the time I saw this, I was like, I don't get it. I thought we were doing what had been requested.
You're, you are doing what that, and having that Plan C and having that is important. That is very important, and because Tyler Schools, I know about Tyler Schools doing that. And that does move on. They're just saying you want to build something they have not seen. And, and they would like to just know and, and tell you, we would like this building. Is this building going to be this? Is it going to be that? Can it be this? Can it be that? And like I say, if they don't show up, it's on them. But to give them the opportunity to have the input is very important. And then know how to design what they think they want.
So if we have a public hearing?
Yes.
If we have a public hearing?
Yes.
And we get the input of what they want?
Yes.
You vote yes to, to approve to go forward with the 1.3?
If the public tells you.
I'm asking you.
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
If the pub, if you're going to design what they've said, if it's legal and possible, sure.
But can you design something that everyone is going to agree with?
No.
No. Because what I like and my taste is totally different from somebody else.
Why don't you hear from the public? Because they need to be heard.
I think who needs to be heard the most are the people that are in the building.
That's what I was going to say.
Well, they're part of the public, come and talk.
But, but what we're, I'm saying is, shouldn't it, yes, everybody can have an opinion. I'm not saying that, and we can get some great ideas from outside. But if my children are going to school in a building, I want experts on buildings and experts on education.
They're not.
Say what our school should be, not me and my grandmother saying, oh, you know what? I want this over here on this.
I, I think one thing, we need, we need to get the, is.
We understand, we understand. We're not taking input, please.
Well, one of the things is, even if we did the, the option A, the architect would come to us and we would, we would have meetings. We would meet with people. We would have a design team. It's not going to be a room, a person of one, design team. What I said, and I'll say it again, at the final design is up to the board. They're the ones that are going to vote on the, you guys vote on the final project. But the design, all that stuff going in, even if we did option A, any architect team would have. Well, I understand that, but even if we did. Okay, well, even if option C, if we voted on it tonight and you approved it tonight, we're still going to have a design team or, or some people with input before the design, we're not.
Of course.
Oregon doesn't have.
What they're saying is, you're going to pay for those designs. They're going to pay for it through this. And what if, what if, what if none of those meet any of their requirements, which could be legal?
But it would happen under option A too.
No, we're not talking A, B, and C. We're after C. I mean, I heard them say, let's go. Everybody said, let's go. Option C is wonderful, so.
But to be able to move forward with option C, we have to have the board approve this tonight so the architect can start the design phase to include everything.
And what they're saying is, what the public is saying, we don't know what they're designing.
So it's a catch 22. We can either do it or don't do it. I mean, they can't.
To show us what they want.
But, but they have, we have to start the design process by engaging the architect to start that process to get to what they're wanting to see. So with that, we ask the board to approve this motion to start the design process as y'all have discussed this evening.
And that costs a million three.
That is the projected cost, but that cost would still, even under option A, we'd still have that same cost.
That's say they're saying is, spend, they're spending a million three for someone to design something and bring it to the board. Where are they in the input of the design? They are.
Again, the district will ensure that there is that input.
When?
As once we start the design process, which hopefully we can start tomorrow.
What if the design is not something that they feel they want?
But under any scenario, that may be the case, as y'all.
But a million three has been spent designing something. They are saying, let's give you some input on what we would like. They're going to ask questions about storm shelters.
Under any design, you have to start the process, and that's what we're asking to do tonight, to start the process.
The, the million three, and Ms. Halsey, correct me if I'm wrong, the million three that we're requesting to be approved is going to be, would be spent regardless of when the bond passed. So say, for example, the bond passed in November, but the problem is, it's going to have escalation cost on top of it, and it's going to. The point, I, I know, if you'll just let me finish, and then if I don't make the point, you're welcome to ask me. But if spending that helps us to do, I, I have a message that came, you know, from you that says, we want that architectural design prior. So that, that's what we're trying to do, is to do that architectural design prior, because that's something that you reiterated to me, that the people were telling you needed to be done. So that's why we even explored this option to go forward and do that. That million and three. That million and three would be spent regardless if the taxpayers and the voters pass the bond in November, but we wait. We've pushed out a, almost, basically a year, and so it's cost us an additional 4.6 million. Okay, I hear your concern. 1.3 spent, and we don't care, we're voting against it anyway. So it doesn't pass. We all know, we have to have a middle school. So I'll come back again, and I'll ask the board again in May. Let's put it back on there again. Mr. Halsey, could we use those plans?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That money is not thrown away if the taxpayers vote it down because I'm coming back if the board allows me in May, and then I'm coming back in November, and then I'm coming back in May because our students have to have a place to go to school.
They all want schools. They all want...
Absolutely. So August the 2nd, if, if the board moves forward, oh, hold on, August 3rd. Okay. If the board moves forward and says, "Yes, we're going to approve this," that's totally up to y'all, but if y'all move forward and say yes, August the 3rd, we'll hold a public hearing. I am not saying everybody's going to get what they want. Just like my grandchildren, you might want it, but you're not going to get everything you want. We have to come together, and we have to listen to each other, and we have to determine what can we do? Storm shelter in one spot, storm shelter whole building? We talking about six or eight, nine, 10 more million dollars to do that? Are you willing to, to spend another $10 million to make the whole building? Those are the kind of things we can talk about, but we have to get to a point that we talk about them as well. So I just wanted to reiterate that 1.3 is not going to be something that you have to pay every single time. You're going to have to pay it regardless of when the bond passes or when the bond is proposed.
So if, if you're saying we can have a public hearing on August the 3rd?
Yes.
Then I'm going to make a motion that we table this to August the 3rd, have the, have the hearing, let them say what they want to say, get their input, and then you can take your vote after that.
Okay.
Right? And if, if it's, we don't want to move forward, then we don't move forward. We'll portable city the back of these schools, and that's, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
I mean, what, regardless of which way we go, we've got to educate the kids that we have.
Absolutely.
So either we build a new school, or we do portables out there. That's up to the taxpayers. We don't make that decision, you know? So if you want, you want a middle school, you got to get out and vote. Vote yes. If you don't want a middle school, then vote no. I hear both sides. I hear no bond, no matter what we put out there. There are plenty of people out there saying, "I don't care what it is, I'm voting no." Okay? That's, if that's your suggestion, then don't waste our time showing up at the meeting on, on August 3rd because we want to, good input to build a middle school.
Good.
That's what we need. A week's not going to make it. If a week makes so much of a difference, then bigger issue. So we can, I, I make a motion, and we table it to August the 3rd. We can have, we can have the open forum, we can get the input, and then...
Special call meeting immediately afterwards?
And then do a, do a special call meeting, and...
We can do that. Okay, that sounds good.
If people's telling you that we don't want to move forward, then you can vote it down then.
Okay, so you made a motion?
I make a motion that we table this item.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Anderson, the second one is Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Pass the 6-0 to table it. Next, I have consideration approval of board endorsement Tazby director candidates. You'll see in your pocket, we've never really taken any action on this. If you have a burning desire to nominate somebody for, for a director, we can. If not, we'll take no action and move on to the next item.
No act.
I move that we move to the next item and make no recommendation.
We don't do a motion, we'll just take no action. Last, consideration approval of official delegate, an alternate delegate for our Tazby delegate assembly. Debbie, when, you know when that, when that is, September? Yeah, September 23rd. So the delegate, this is in San Antonio, it's not in Dallas this year. So we normally send a delegate. Anybody can go to the convention if you'd like to go to, to the state convention. This is the state convention, not our summer leadership course. But on Saturday, they have a delegate assembly, and the delegate will represent area, Rettok SD, and for the votes that they, they give Tazby to go and talk to Austin about some of the issues. If the delegate can't make it, then the alternate will, will fill in. Is there anybody who would like to volunteer to be a delegate or an alternate?
For the alternate or for the delegate?
Is that...
For the alternate or the delegate, which one?
Either one. We got to get both.
I'll go. I'll go. As long as my husband's well.
Well, if you'd be the, the delegate, do you think Johnny could do the alternate?
As well.
Okay, let's, let's do that, then. So we have a, can we get a motion, motion on that for Donna and Johnny?
I move that we, that we approve Donna and Johnny not, or say, Donna not as our delegate and Johnny as the alternate for the Tazby delegate assembly in September.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Peterson, the second one by Mr. Sebring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Pass the 6-0. Anybody would choose or would like to go to that, please let Debbie know by... Soon as possible.
Tonight.
So she can make reservations for you. It's Thursday, is a pre-conference opening reception, so it's really Friday and Saturday. Looks like the most of this, and a little bit Sunday. They have a, a general session on Sunday morning. So if you'd like to go, please let Debbie. In the back of your, and that concludes our action items. In the back of your package, you'll find your information items. Is there anything you'd like to discuss? Hearing none. The time is 8:54 PM. The board will adjourn in the closed session pursuant to multiple Texas government codes as listed on the agenda.